Move it the other way, it costs less.
I will.
I have notes on here.
Okay, six o'clock, good evening. How's everyone doing? And no, I'm not sharing. All right, we'll get to that later, but for right now, I'd like for everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Live the road court.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gilligan.
Here.
Commissioner La Piccolo.
Here.
Commissioner Spiegler.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here. All right, okay. Moving on to item of consent, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Oh, need to approve that, I'm sorry, I missed, okay. Gender approval, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I move approval of agenda as published.
In a second. Hmm, so move. All right, so now I want to ask for motion to approve item of consent.
So moved.
Are we on schedule yet? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, do we take a vote on that first motion?
Agenda approval.
Okay, I'm sorry, no we didn't. Going back to general approval, motion was made by Buckey. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Same. All right, now we ask for motion for approve item of consent.
So moved.
I'll catch up here later, I'll catch up at some point, people. Uh, John, Commissioner La Piccolo made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same. All right. Now we need to move for a quasi judicial proceeding.
Ask town planner Kyle Garner to come forward. Provide any background information or updated information on this proceeding from your previous leader.
Thank you, and at this time, if it'd be all right, I'd like to be sworn in by the town clerk.
Mayor, if it's okay, if we could go ahead and get the other witnesses, so we just have to swear on people once, I think probably the applicant.
If there are any other witnesses pertaining to this particular case, also gets sworn in by the clerk.
Here comes the chief also.
Swear everybody in at the same time. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and board members. The item before you this evening is a quasi judicial hearing to request a variance for three sixty Steep Point Road. The applicant is Mr. Alex Pooley and the property owner is Mr. Wayne Noonam. For the record, we have in our staff report, we have exhibits A through F, and I would like to include them as part of the record for tonight's hearing. Also on the screen this evening, we do have a PowerPoint presentation in which we will go over the elements of the case, and in conjunction with this tonight, the fire chief, the fire chief is here tonight also. This is a joint presentation for the two of us, that he may also have points of interest that you would have as part of this request. So the variance request is we have is case number twenty-four dash twelve, and it's from section thirty-four of the subdivision ordinance, subsection H, which is dealing with improvements in minimum standards of design, and this is for Steep Point Road. The property facts that we have for you this evening, but before we get there, I would like to mention to the board that we do have exhibit B, which is a vicinity map showing where the property is located and the hatching on three sixty Steep Point Road, and it is a flag lot. And the property facts of this case is that the property is owned R twenty. R twenty is low density within the town of Beaufort, and twenty represents that the lot must have at least twenty thousand square feet of area in order to be considered a lot in this particular zoning district. The next property fact is that the property is located within the town of Beaufort's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It is not located within the corporate or municipal limits of the town, but it is included within our, our planning and zoning jurisdiction. Number three, the applicant has secured environmental permits from the county environmental health, and that is included in your packet as well, showing that they have obtained both a well permit and a septic permit for this property. The next property fact is that the acreage is two point six seven acres plus or minus, and that actually goes to the last bullet that we have in this particular fact area, in that this is considered a major subdivision because the overall acreage is greater than two acres, which requires preliminary and final plat's approval from the Board of Commissioners. Another fact that this property does have one single family residence on site. Another fact is that this property is zoned in an AE six, which is a flood zone determination of a base flood of six feet. So the variance this evening from the town requirements that is before you, is that the town's fire department is part of the technical review of the proposed subdivision, required the developer owner to improve the existing private drive at a minimum of twenty feet in width with a drive surface to accommodate vehicles of at least seventy-five thousand pounds and have a thirteen point five foot height clearance. And the applicant is requesting a variance from this request to install these improvements. The next slide that we have for you shows the other exhibit, which is a survey that was prepared from Atlantic Surveying for the applicant, Mr. Alex Pooley and the owner, Mr. Wayne Noonam. And then we also have an aerial photo map that was provided from the county's GIS identifying that they have, the county has the mapped acreage at two point six seven. There, it's not uncommon for there to be a little bit of difference between a surveyed acreage and county acreage, and so we would just like to point that out. And then as part of your hearing this evening, you have, of course, to conduct the quasi judicial hearing, your findings of fact, and then the decision on the variance. And included in those, we have provided you a worksheet in which the four areas that have to be determined in granting the variance. So unnecessary hardship, hardships from conditions, hardships that do not result from actions taken by the applicant, and then is, is the request consistent with the spirit of the ordinance? And these are the determinations that the board will need to make as part of the required findings for, for not only this variance, but for any variance. So again, the items that you have before you this evening are to conduct the quasi judicial hearing, findings of fact on the decision, and then the decision on the variance. And just as a, as a footnote in regards to the town requirements, this is a, this has been fairly consistent and applied for other properties that have come before you. Most recently, you had Kelly Drive, which was off of Highway seventy, which these rules were applied to a subdivision, as well as Davis Bay subdivision off of Bo Coast Phase Three, and then, I'm trying to think. Thinking there's at least one more that we've had recently that fit this criteria, but it escapes me. But just, we wanted to let the board know that this is not uncommon, and that these standards of the twenty foot in width and seventy-five thousand pounds actually come out of the North Carolina Fire Code, but the chief could testify to that more clearly than I could if need be. And with that, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim.
Glad to right.
We'll be glad to entertain questions.
All right, John.
First, I have a quick question for the, for our attorney, kind of a stickler for following kind of rules and regs. Is there anything else we need to do before we start to make sure we're in compliance?
Not before you guys ask questions of this witness, we've gotten a little bit of out of order this evening, but we're going to, before the applicant makes his case, and for the benefit of the general public, cover some of those baseline procedural items I think you are alluding to. But I would go ahead and ask your planner any questions you have now, since he has been sworn in this evening.
I have no questions at all.
Commissioner Gilligan.
Good evening. Kyle, can you please clarify for me whether you were saying that the rules in the land development ordinance related to the precedents that you mentioned, Kelly Drive, Davis Bay subdivision, and some others that you couldn't think of at the moment, or were there variance associated with those cases?
I can now think of what the other one was, and that was Salt Wind, and there was a variance request for Salt Wind, and that was for cul-de-sac length, which is also part of not only the subdivision but Fire Code, but no ma'am, no other variances were applied for other than the cul-de-sac for Salt Wind.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Oliver.
I have no questions here, Kyle, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spiegler.
No questions, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you ma'am.
And I have none at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. So this is a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing, which means that the court hearing state law set specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision, the Board of Commissioners must base its decision upon competent material and substantial evidence in the records. A quasi judicial decision is a decision contained by the standards in the land development ordinance and based on the facts presented. All applications for special use permit must be consistent with the land development ordinance for the town of Beaufort, and whether the special use is appropriate in the proposed location. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. The Board of Commissioners shall hear relevant information from the parties withstanding as set forth in the North Carolina General Statute, one sixty D dash four oh six and four oh two, fourteen oh two. As sole discretion to Board of Commissioners, other witnesses who do not have standing may present competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive. Parties may appear in person by, by destiny or by attorney or present information relevant to the requirements of the ordinance. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. The Board of Commissioners acting through the mayor may subpoena witnesses and compel the production of evidence. For certain topic, the Board of Commissioners may hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. Individual providing expert opinion must be qualified as an expert and provide factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony at this time, where the oaths have been done. Thank you. So we call out first.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, you have administered the oaths, so I think the next step would to ask your fellow commissioners if they are aware of any conflicts of interest they may have individually in participating in this case.
All right, any of the commissioners in conflict of interest pertaining to this case? None?
No.
Okay. I got a cheat sheet here.
Yeah, I know you do, I think I'm cheating along with you. You've got your presentation by staff that's been entered into the record, so I think at this time is the applicant's opportunity to go, and sir, if you have any questions for Mr. Garner, you're entitled to cross-examine him in this proceeding, although it probably would be a little less vigorous than you might see in your court, so.
I appreciate y'all having me back to speak here, and just to reiterate what I presented to you last month, we are requesting this variance so that we can subdivide my father-in-law's lot. We want to build essentially a guest house on this property. My father-in-law's here, he can take questions from, from y'all if you have any for him, but he wants to give a piece of his property to his daughter. That's essentially what we have here. When we submitted this in October, we didn't find out about the twenty-foot wide, seventy-five thousand pound compaction rating until after we submit. So talking with the town planner, the fire chief, the fire marshal, this is what we've come up with, is how we can make this happen. We're not trying to, you know, pull a fast one on the town, not planning on selling this lot and skipping town with the money. I mean, we want to live here, we want to be good residents and citizens of Beaufort, and we're asking that you grant this variance on the driveway so that we can build this house, because essentially what you have is a house that's already there. The driveway, that exists. If that house catches fire tonight, the fire marshal's gonna have to come down the driveway and put it out. And the fire marshal, who's not here tonight, has been to the property and ridden down the driveway. I would submit to you that there is plenty of room for the fire truck currently to get down there. And basically, we want to add one additional dwelling. Now, we can't just build the house on the lot right now because there's an existing barn on the property. In the rule states, you can have two structures, so we're requesting this variance to subdivide the lot so that we can build this house. And what I saw attached to your agenda was a little bit different than the ordinance that I was given from the planner. I'm looking at section six, Town of Beaufort subdivision ordinance, and that's where it talks about the Board of Commissioners' authority to grant a variance. I don't know if that's exactly what y'all are looking at, but what I can see, this board has the authority to grant a variance if undue hardship would result from strict compliance. And what I argued to you last month was that it's not just undue, it's extreme hardship. Building this road, I think first would just be cost prohibitive to this project, but also, I mean, you're talking about destroying the natural beauty of this property and cutting down mature trees, and I don't think that that really serves the purpose of the ordinance. You know, a couple of things that I pointed out last time was that we could apply for a, I guess, a special use permit and renovate the barn that's on the property without making any improvements to the driveway, and we can live there. So I would submit to you that it seems there, there's not much difference, at least to this board, if we do that, or if we build a brand new structure that is modern and up the code with the electrical and the wiring, and we're not essentially moving into what I would describe as a tinderbox, you know, of this old barn. And so I think that's a good reason to grant it, but if we go through the section six on your, you know, what, what you have to find in order to grant this variance, you have to find the undue hardship, taking account the nature and the, of the proposed subdivision. Here, it's a family-to-family transaction, you know, we're not, I think the other ones that the planner mentioned, I don't think that was a family-to-family transaction. I think they were developing those lots, perhaps selling them, making money on them. I mean, if I was sitting here asking you to grant me the subdivision so I could build a condominium complex, certainly, you know, the road would need to be improved. You're talking about adding a lot of additional people to the area. As I mentioned before, my wife and I, we just had a daughter, she's ten weeks old today. We've been staying with our in-laws quite a bit, or my in-laws, her parents. So there's five people back at three sixty Steep Point Road currently, and when we leave here, we're going back over there. So if that house catches fire, the fire marshal's coming, he's got to save five people. If you grant this variance and we build this house, there's gonna be five people there. So it's not like we're adding an additional burden to the fire marshal that's not already there. You have to take into account the existing use of the land, the vicinity is obviously residential, number of persons to reside, five, that's not going to change. The probable effect of the proposed subdivision upon traffic, I'd say no effect, I mean, you're talking about way off the road. And it says, no variance shall be granted unless the board finds, and then you have four specific things, and it says that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting said property such that the strict application would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land. I think that my father-in-law has the right to convey his property to his daughter. I mean, if he wants to cut a section out and convey it, I'd say that's a substantial property right that is being affected by strict compliance with your ordinance. You must find that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. That's essentially the same thing, but what about the quiet use and enjoyment? He has a right to enjoy the natural beauty of the property. Cutting down these mature trees is going to destroy the beauty. So then you find that the circumstances given rise to the need are peculiar to the parcel and are not generally characteristics of other parcels in the jurisdiction. I don't know if it's peculiar, but family-to-family transaction, I think if you looked at codes from other municipalities, you would see that there are exceptions like this. Lenore County, for example, where my surveyor's from, there's an exception for family-to-family transactions of this nature. Says that the granting the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, or injurious to other property in the territory. And I asked our neighbor to come, Mr. Lupton, because I would submit to you that not granting the variance would be injurious to not only Mr. Noonam's property, the Lupton's property, I mean, you're talking about destroying the beauty of the driveway. I think that's injurious to his property. You know, the fire marshal had said that he would help me any way that he could. He said I needed a variance. The town planner has told me I need a variance, that's why I'm here, asking. Want to continue to live here. My wife is a business owner here in town, she has a shop on Front Street, so I mean, we are tax-paying citizens, residents of Beaufort. So we want to stay here, I'm hoping that you'll grant the variance, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Commissioner La Piccolo.
I guess I'm trying to make sense about the, trying to make sense about the property itself and the strict application. And not getting into family business, but this is a gift, right? So this will be a monetary, and basically giving away a piece of property, and there's value to this property. So there is, you know, this is a monetary transaction, or giving away a piece of property, the property's valued something, the property has quite a substantial amount of value to, it's a waterfront property. So I'm trying to understand the hardship of, the financial hardship with placing that on the, on the property, placing a drive on that property when you're receiving a gift of value. So that's, that's one thing I'm trying to understand. The other part is how that, how you would justify maneuvering a fire truck through that space if the properties were sold. You know, you have no intent in selling the property, correct?
Correct. Correct.
But at some point, the properties may be sold.
Well, also, at some point, my wife will inherit the other property, and she'll own both portions. So I think that the board would have the right to put a condition that should it be sold or should an additional building, dwelling be built, that then you would have to make the improvement to the road. So I think the board has that authority too. So that would be one way to sort of alleviate that concern. As far as the financial, I mean, you know, we're obviously gonna have to get a loan and build the house. You're talking about building around a 1,400-square-foot house. I'm not certain what the cost would be, but I would anticipate an additional probably $100,000 to build this road. I mean, I, I work for the government, you know, I'm a.
And I'm not trying to get into your finances, but.
I'm a government employee, essentially, so.
Right.
You know, we want to live in Beaufort. The whole reason this came up is because we've been trying to buy a house here. And as y'all know, it's very, very expensive. And so my father-in-law's been gracious enough to, you know, offer this awesome gift to his daughter. You know, he wants her to be close, and so that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillen?
Mr. Pulli, is the road, it currently looks to be all gravel in combination of gravel and grass or dirt? Is that right?
I believe it would, you would consider it all gravel. I mean, in the center, there's some grass, I guess.
And have you been told that it would have to be paved or?
My understanding is that it could remain gravel, but it has to have the 75,000-pound compaction ratings. I'm not sure how to accomplish that, how much rock that would actually take. I'm certain it would be quite a bit.
So it'd be compaction with rock? Do you know if that would be additional sediment that would have to be brought in?
I, I don't, I'm certain they would have to bring dirt in to build the road up.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oliver?
Mr. Pulli, how many homes does that driveway serve?
Well, my father-in-law's house and then the neighbor, I guess that's to the north, is a veneysment. They can access from, to their house from there.
Can you speak up a little bit? I can't hear you.
I guess it's two, to answer your question.
What about the houses on the picture, too, are right there? Are they served by that driveway?
They have a separate driveway that they use.
Does that come in from the, from?
It, it comes in from Steep Point Road. It's called Steep Point Landing. My understanding is that's a private drive. And to my knowledge, it's not 20 feet wide or have a, you know, turnaround. I'm not certain.
I'll, I'll share with you that, so let me ask you one other question. You've mentioned costs. You've mentioned mature trees. Other than that, there's nothing that would prevent you from splitting the lot served by a 20-foot-wide entrance road with compaction, is there?
There is 20 feet there. And I think my father-in-law has 31 feet on the road. So there's enough room to put it, if that's what you're asking.
So what would, so with, with meeting what the fire marshal is pointing out as a requirement, what would prevent you from splitting the lot and doing that, other than cost?
Well, we're not gonna do that because I think it would destroy the beauty of the property. And it would also upset the neighbors. And I just, and I don't think they want us to do that, to be perfectly honest. And I did bring the neighbor, if y'all wanted to hear from him.
And did you also say that adding another structure to it, you're not allowed to add an additional structure?
So there's already two structures, and I guess that's in the regulation. You can't add, add an additional.
Additional.
Because that's how this all started. I mean, first, we thought, well, we'd just build, and it's essentially, like I said, a guest house. Because the idea is, my wife will own both properties, and one day, we'll live in the big house, if that makes sense. And so that's how this whole thing started. And then we find out that, well, you can't just build a third house or a third structure. And so then we say, well, we'll subdivide, and then anyway, that's how we've gotten to this point.
And that third structure would go where on that property?
If you look at, on the surveyor, it has the proposed dwelling. It would be next to the barn. But there's like a, a building, like a, like a shed that's right there that is removable. And that's, that would move, and it would essentially, we would clear that brush. It's essentially that, like, thick brush that you see all around the county is what's there. So you'd have to sort of mulch that, and that's where the house would go.
Commissioner Spiegler? Are you not quite finished?
Oh, I will share with you, no warrant or representation, but I've built some fire lanes in this community before. And albeit ours were commercial in nature, they were required to be 26 feet wide. And I will share with you that we were able to do those and have a grass surface or have a gravel surface or have, other than paved. And it's, and it was designed and meets the requirements of a fire truck. So I would, I would share with you that that can be done based on my experience. That's all I have.
Commissioner Spiegler?
Thank you, Mr. Pulli. Appreciate you coming in again and sharing with us. And I did want to say congratulations, and I hope that you're getting some sleep, maybe soon.
Hopefully soon.
What's that?
I said hopefully soon.
Hopefully. It's sooner than you think, hopefully. So I just have a couple of questions. It's sort of hard for me to tell from this. Can you tell us approximately how many trees would have to be cut down to do this? Do you have an estimation?
That's a better question, I think, for my father-in-law. I mean, he, he owns the property. I've just been a visitor to the property. So I, I'm not certain which ones are on his side or on the neighbor's side. And, but there are oak trees that line the driveway. I know there's at least two fully mature pecan trees that would have to come down. There's also a giant pine tree. I think that would have to come down. I'm just not certain.
Yeah, so I mean, if you've, I've been a commissioner now for a year, and everyone up here can probably say that I speak, you know, I never want to cut down trees. We're redoing our tree ordinance soon. So, I mean, if there's any way we can do this without, with cutting down the least number of trees as possible, I would be very supportive of that.
I certainly appreciate you saying that, and I feel the same way. I think it'd be a sin to cut down these, especially the pecan trees. But there are oak trees on the driveway, too, that would have to come down.
And I agree in this situation, but this is, you know, this is how I feel about trees across the town. I want to make sure that we are preserving as many trees as possible. I do have a couple more questions. This might be a Kyle question, but, so if you, if we were to subdivide this into two lots, correct? So right now, you can have two structures on the lot. Would that mean you could now, we would now have two different properties, and they each could have two structures?
That's correct. I believe that's correct, yes.
And right now, there's two, so there could, if we were to pass this variance, there could essentially be two more structures.
And I think you could, if you're worried about there being more than just one additional house, like I stated earlier, I think you can put in the condition that should there ever be a desire and that, I mean, like you were saying, if we sold it, that condition would stay with the property, right? I think that would be recorded. The attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. But whoever lived there would have to comply. And I think at that point, we'd have to build the road.
Yes, if I may. Yes, the board is entitled to place any conditions it deems fit on the variance. Any variance granted under 160D does, in fact, run with the land. So it would be binding, where the conditions would be binding on future owners. If we did have a condition, we would probably record this owner to just make, or record this order to make absolutely sure future potential owners had record notice of the conditions, again, if the board went that direction.
So you're saying we could theoretically do something, subdivide it, but say only one additional building? That could be a condition that we place on that?
That, that's correct. And you could also consider fashioning an addition, additional condition, as the applicant alluded to about, you know, future ownership. That, I mean, we'd have to play with it, but you could get there. Yes, ma'am.
So in the future, if these property, if this property were to be sold, we could have, those conditions would go with that sale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think I have one more question. I'm guessing you've already thought of this, so just humor me. So you have two structures on the property. Did you consider, you know, essentially doing an addition to the barn, right? So that it would still be, does that make sense? Like a, a structure next to it or attached to it, right?
We did consider that, and I think we could apply and get a permit to do that and renovate the barn. Something I mentioned last time that I failed to mention this time, I think that would also be injurious to the neighbor. Currently, the neighbor enjoys a water view across the Noonam's property. If we build on that, it could potentially obstruct his view if we go up or out. And so we want to move the structure essentially over, like, I think 50 feet. It doesn't block his view of the water. I think if you block his view, it's gonna devalue his property, right? And so that's sort of the reason we don't want to go that route. We're trying not to upset the neighbors, right? We're trying to kind of make this work without causing the least amount of, I guess, aggravation as possible. So where we want to tuck the house in, you know, he won't be able to see the house, you know, right? I mean, currently, it's just like a thick, brushy area.
So now that you say that, you have jogged my memory, and I do remember you saying that the last time you were here. But obviously, I've had holiday brain, and I, so thank you for repeating that. Okay, I think that that's all my questions.
All your questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. Well, I have one.
Oh, yes.
I get to speak.
Okay.
On the variance in term, what is the, remind me again what the hardship would be if you were having to add more gravel to this?
I think cutting the trees down is, and also the cost. And then I think the damage it would do to my father-in-law's property. It would devalue the neighbor's property. I mean, I, I think that cutting the trees down and moving the fence, I mean, it would take away from the natural beauty. I think that's sort of the hardship that we're at. And for some strict compliance with the rules to make us cut down the trees. And that's just sort of where I see is, you know, you'd have the discretion to, to work around.
Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll be hearing from the chief because he was sworn in. As a volunteer farmer myself, I would be very concerned about if I was the chief or the captain having to bring my trucks in on a, on a road that, that would not be low-bearing, just like you would for your house. Your house, you know, the structure of it has to be low-bearing. And your road would have to be the same thing to be able to have those trucks come in and protect your property.
Right. And I would submit to you that the driveway can handle the fire truck currently. Of course, that would be a question for your chief, but, and you have a pre-existing condition. There's already a house back there. So if it starts burning, right as we're speaking, they're gonna have to go back there regardless, right? And so I, I don't think this proposed subdivision is gonna add an additional burden, is what I was trying to, was the point I was trying to make.
All right. And you say you, you have your neighbor here as a witness?
Mm-hmm. And he wasn't sworn in, but he is here, and he offered to come and, and speak on it. And if you want him sworn, or you want to hear from him.
You would like that?
I have another question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Spiegler has a question.
Yes, sir.
So looking at the preliminary plat, it looks like the, the well-septic area is going to go in that, that brush or tree-lined area there? Is that correct?
That's right.
So how, so you will be removing quite a bit of number of trees?
So there's, it's like a thick brush is the best way I can describe it. It's sort of common around the county, very thick. It's, it's not really, not really cutting down trees. You're sort of, I mean, I think a mortar blade could chop that stuff up, and it would be gone. So I, I'm, I just sort of, I consider that different than a fully mature pecan tree. But I mean, you might feel differently. I'm just, that's how I see it.
I'm like Commissioner Spiegler about, you know, cutting down trees. But at the same time, if we have to make sure the safety of your family and those trucks being able to get in there properly.
I agree with you, and that's why I'd say, consider this. If I, if I renovate the old barn, run power and modern appliances, and I would call that a tinderbox. I mean, I think he's gonna be back there quicker trying to save my family if I go that route. And I can do that, I'm told, with making zero improvements to the road. So what I'm proposing is building a brand-new structure, hopefully safer. Hopefully, the fire marshal won't have to come at all. So I mean, I, you know, you kind of.
Where you apple to oranges? Is that what you refer into in terms of whether you do the barn or you put a house?
I think the house would be safer, is the point I'm trying to make. And I'm also pointing out that it seems that what difference does it really make to the board if I do that or build a brand-new house? The fire marshal's still going to have to come back there. And evidently, within the rules, we can do that. I mean, that's, that's what I was told, that I could just do that if I wanted to. And so either way, the fire marshal would have to come back there.
Okay. His witness.
No, I've got one other question, if I could.
Oh, one other question?
When you're ready.
Sure, sure.
On the, I don't, I'm a little confused. I don't understand, on the survey, in my advanced age, I think I'm reading it correctly, it's showing a 30-foot width in the survey, which to me, can you see it?
Yeah. It does look like a three. It's very small.
I mean, if it's 30, I can, the depiction is throwing me off.
I think that's the width of the property. He's got 31 feet right there, but I'm not.
But the drawing that you're showing on the survey, on the thing that I have a copy of here, is showing a 30-foot width. We're talking about a 20-foot width. I can't see it either, so I do, but again, I just.
It definitely says 30, but I don't know.
Yeah, and I, and it doesn't surprise me that you have it, that demarked at the road for 30. But I, I, I just want to point out, if you would, that looking at that, it's 50% bigger than what we're asking for, for 20. If I'm reading this correctly.
I, I don't have an answer.
Can you blow that up and look at it and tell me, Elizabeth or somebody? I'll admit, I can't see it.
It's possible that that's what the surveyor put on there, but like I said, we found out about the requirement after we submitted.
Is that 30? So I would share with you that the representation made in the survey misled me. And also, I noticed it provides a T-turnaround at the bottom, which I presume is a suggestion of trying to end up with a turnaround for a fire truck. Am I missing something on this? I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's a big part of it.
But that's, that's what your plan is showing.
Right.
Yeah, right.
That's, that is the deep product.
Yes, sir.
And may I speak to the board?
Well, sir, you, did you, did you get sworn in?
No, sir.
Then, then he had to respond to.
The requirements for flag lots, driveway requirements, frontage on Steep Point, that's how it all started.
Part of the reason why we couldn't just subdivide is because the driveway was 411 feet long.
Right.
And if it's over 400 feet.
Right.
You can't, and so that's, you know, so we've been trying to figure out a way to do this. And the other thing was, each lot would need 20 feet of road frontage. But because we were 31 feet of road frontage, then that was the other reason. So the private drive was a suggestion of the town planner, or actually, no, I think. it's been a long process. We've been working on this since April.
So, so have we, so we're with you all the way.
And so, we, you know, we're trying to abide by the rules, you know, and so, but I think what we've discovered now at this point is that, you know, we would request the variance so that we don't have to make the improvement.
I've got, I've got, I understand your request. I personally would like to hear from the fire marshal.
Okay. Uh, your witness is competent, and your witness of purpose of-
That's if you wanna hear, I mean, he's volunteered to come, and so, if you wanna hear from him, I mean, I'd be happy.
Will he be giving in the relevant, any different information of what you provided?
I think he would reiterate what I've said, but I don't wanna speak for him, you know. He and I have talked and discussed it. I know he's discussed it with my father-in-law. He would prefer, I, I think I can say this, he would prefer that we not make this improvement to the driveway.
Well, the statute requires, you know, no repetitive. If he's just gonna be speaking on pretty much what you already has been giving us, then, then we can move on.
I think it would be repetitive.
Okay, it'd be repetitive. All right, thank you. Okay. There are no other further questions to this witness?
He did, he did have a comment. I think it's not anything I've said, if you wanted to hear from him, but he, what he just told me is that they've had a giant dump truck down here putting-
Yeah, if he just, if he just wanna make a comment, then we just need to move on, and, I mean, it's just his, his comment, and we'd take other things into consideration.
Did you wanna speak?
Thank y'all very much.
Not now.
Chief Ray?
Yes, sir. I'm here for your questions.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, then Commissioner Piccolo?
We'll go ahead and state the specific requirements for this lot, if the lot is subdivided.
Okay, this is, it's found in the fire code when we go into a major subdivision, as this is driven by the town subdivision ordinance, when it goes over two acres. At that point, this is what we've seen, and this is what Mr. Gardner was talking about with consistency all over town. The twenty-foot wide, if a compacture is seventy-five thousand pounds, the compacture of seventy-five thousand pounds comes from our largest truck, that being our aerial ladder truck. The twenty-foot wide is put in the code, or the, the ascert, where it's ascertained is, two fire trucks or two immersive vehicles can maneuver, or they can pass each other. That's the basis where you go online. That's where you find the rationale for why you have a twenty-foot wide requirement. You know, the thirteen-and-a-half foot wide, I'm sorry, thirteen-and-a-half tall speaks to the ability of the apparatus to get in and out or anything that you're working on. So, this all allows access to buildings, or this allows access to, for fire equipment or emergency equipment to get in. We're gonna be bringing water lines. We've gotta have supply lines, you know? So, that's in consistency of what we've seen with everything that Mr. Gardner brought up. Two months ago, we sat here with Beaufort Club, and that was the fire department access road coming in off the back of Carteret, that they agreed to. Mr. Gardner's example he used with Salt Wind off the best, back of Pearl West and that subdivision, that was a variance requested, and at that point, when Salt Wind was on the table. Excuse me. Kelly Lane off the bypass, we did that, I think, two years ago? A year ago, within the past year, these same requirements were asked for with Kelly Lane. The Beaufort Hotel, we're dropping back many years now. That's the pathway that you find behind the hotel, and its access with the fire department, I'm sorry, with the fire hydrant off Lenoxville and FDC on the back of the hotel. The most recent was Bow Coast, Davis Bay, and the four lots, where you look across the bay from where, where the property we're speaking to now, they had to put in that roadway went over four-hundred feet, and they had to be at the end of that roadway within a hundred-and-fifty foot of any structure. You know, so that's the most recent that I can give you, and that's where, how we establish the requirements that you would find in the fire code.
Have you walked the property? Have you walked that, that driveway?
This property?
Yes.
No, sir.
No.
The fire marshal, fire marshal is in, he's right in a period of resignation. He's moving on to another fire department right now, so he's not here tonight in that aspect. He is a code enforcement official, you know, and I think he did visit with the property owners down at their, their property.
So, I guess in its current state right now, you know, the applicant discussed, um, in, uh, putting a new structure on, which would be probably a better structure and more, uh, best for fire safety and so forth. When, in your opinion, if the applicant did not, um, uh, make this up to code, would that infringe on public safety?
That's a very careful statement when you ask for my opinion, and I'm testimony for factual, so that would, that's, I cannot go there. I don't feel safe going-
But we don't know, you can't speak to whether or not in this state right now that a fire truck could make its way down that without any impediments of, of branches or limbs and so forth with one of the larger structures that we have.
I ca, I can do, no. I have not been to the property all the way down to the end of the road. I cannot speak to that. No, sir. Uh, the home, or property owner might be able to give you guidance on that. But as far as limb height and things like that, I don't, I do not know about that there. The driveway, looking down the driveway, I'd, until I was at the end of it, or beside Mr. Lupton's property, I couldn't, I couldn't factually answer that right now.
But placing the driveway in would improve the access for that property, in your opinion?
No doubt. Uh, that I do say, yes.
All right, no further questions?
Uh, Commissioner Gilken?
Thanks. Um, Chief Ray, when you mentioned the Beaufort Club and the Kelly Lane and the Davis Bay situations, can you remember approximately how many residents those were serving? Or how many houses, structures?
Beaufort Club, they went greater than a hundred rooftops, basically, is when we did that a few months ago. You know, um, Kelly Lane, I would have to defer with Mr. Gardner, and I think that was a couple residences on Kelly Lane with what their improvement was. Um, the Salt Wind, that was eighty-something when it was done part one and two. Bow Coast and Davis Bay, there was four properties that you go to the back of the peninsula now. That's the four properties on the end of Davis Bay that were put in, and that was annexed into the town with all of that, when that went on.
Thank you.
No other questions? Okay. Commissioner Oliver?
Am I understanding correctly, Chief, that the ordinance requires a twenty-foot wide supporting road? Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir. Twenty-foot wide is seventy-five thousand pound compacture.
And it also requires thirteen-and-a-half feet height, to be clear of any, to be clear.
Yes, sir.
And am I understanding correctly that that has been consistent, to your knowledge, that has been consistently applied to other projects under our jurisdiction?
Yes, sir, as they fell under this major development.
I have no other questions.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, I'm, I am concerned that, like, the witness willing to, I mean, I guess, make improvement and use in terms of, of, uh, cutting down the trees. Um, and you said the, the fire marshal is moving on?
Yes, sir.
Have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. That is, you have the ability to cross-examine?
We're gonna ask if there's any rebuttals to any testimony given to this point, so open that up for rebuttal.
Chief, if three-sixty Steep Point Road catches fire tonight, will you come out there and put the fire out?
Yes, sir. We're gonna do everything we can.
Can I ask, the attorney?
Commissioner-
How would the town, or would the town face any type of liability for granting this request under its conditions? And if there was some type of event that the town could not access because of something impeding the access to that property, would the town be held liable?
Yes, subject, of course, to lawyers' ability to come up with all kinds of claims. I mean, there is this creature out there called the public duty doctrine, and generally, local governments in this state are not liable to individual citizens for failure to provide police services, fire services. It's really gotta be, um, you know, a pretty reckless situation, because otherwise, every day, you'd have a claim of, you know, the police department didn't respond quickly enough. The fire department was there in three minutes. They should've been there in two minutes, uh, things like that. So, it's hard to really envision any liability, particularly for the parties asking for the variance. I think for future owners, you could address that through a condition, if, if the board wanted to go there.
California notwithstanding.
On the other side of the-
All right. Okay. Any other witnesses rebuttal, Chief, that you wanted to add anything?
No, sir, unless there's a question.
Okay. All right, before the board deliberate, uh, is everyone satisfied with the material that's been presented in this case? Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegel, I mean, uh, Gilken?
Are we gonna try to come to some kind of consensus before we vote? Is that where you're going with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this, this one's a tough one. However, I see that because the value of the property owner is largely centered around the quality of it being a place where you can see the water and enjoy the view, enjoy the trees. I do see hardship there. And I do think that there's some things that are peculiar to the property unless they just ripped the property up and started over again, which wouldn't make much sense. But I do think, um, the environment there and the way that it was developed, gosh, since the eighteen-hundreds when it was a plantation, have made it kinda hard. Um, I don't think the hardship results from anything the applicant or the property owner did. They didn't even own it when the trees were growing there and the original path was, was made. And generally, I do think a variance would be consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the land development ordinance. Um, we've had plenty of things happen within our, our jurisdiction, including the ETJ, where we were pretty disappointed with environmental impacts. And even though this wouldn't be huge by having to cut the trees down, it is something. And, um, I would really hate to see those trees come down. I would consider it with, with the condition about the limiting of the number of structures and that, um, condition being carried forward and being noted in, in a deed, if we wanted to discuss a condition. So, that's kinda where I stand at this point.
Commissioner Oliver?
I'm very sympathetic to the same exact issues, point by point. Notwithstanding that, I'm not confident that a twenty-foot hard, adequate surface could not be constructed in those, in that area. And frankly, I would like to see more effort to see if that couldn't be done, uh, to satisfy all of the issues that we're talking about today. And that's why I've kind of wet my pants over the depiction of thirty feet, because we're talking about twenty feet. And I, I, I bet you with some, with some, I bet you a, a, a comfortable, non-tree destructive, twenty-foot wide, doesn't have to be straight, can be, can change direction, but I can't help but believe that the requirements of the ordinance with a little extra, with, with extra effort, uh, could not be constructed so that we can meet the ordinance and not have to seek a variance. So, I'm straddle the fence, but I have, I also have to be consistent, um, though that's sometimes not very pleasant, um, especially among friends. But that's, we, I think we are, do that, and I think we'd have to, and I think the chief has the same problem. Chief doesn't wanna cut down trees either, but he does also want to know that when he dispatches a, a truck there, that the truck's gonna get to the fire. I think he'd probably be willing to bend a little bit on how they had to turn around and how many flagmen they had to have to turn around, but he wants to get the truck to the fire. And that's, that's what we're dealing with here, is life safety.
It's a safety issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is safety. Uh, Commissioner Spiegel?
I think these are all good points, um, by Commissioner Gilken and Commissioner Oliver. I do think, um, you know, this is, um, I think it is somewhat different than the other examples in that, you know, this is less than three acres of property. There are a limited number of structures there. Um, I agree with what Commissioner Gilken said, you know, it's not a lot of trees, but it is trees, and, um, it seems to, that it would create a hardship. So, I would be willing to consider this with conditions that are placed, you know, considering if the property is sold. I think that is important. But again, you know, this is, it is a small piece of property. Um, there's not gonna be a lot of new homeowners moving in. Like we heard from Mr. Polley, it's gonna be the same number of residents either way. Um, so, that's where I stand. Thank you.
I, I have none, no questions. Any other did, give any further questions?
I would agree with, um, you know, this being hardship. In some ways, it is a self-imposed hardship with, with splitting the lot and placing the, you know, creating this, uh, need to have this, uh, this drive placed. Um, I am concerned, though, about safety, as the applicant did say, um, mentioned that if there was a fire tomorrow, it would be up to the chief to get his, his, uh, his, his trucks and so forth down there. But it may not be an optimal way of getting down there. And if you add an additional property, and there isn't a chance there to make sure that it does come up to code, um, for the public, for his own family's safety, that I would think you would want that as well. You know, this is property that's waterfront, it's eighty-six, you know, have storms and rain and the ability for the trucks to have problems, get stuck. It may not be the best right now, but like you said, if you had an opportunity to improve the dwelling, you'd wanna do that and make it more fire-resistant and so forth. Well, I would think you'd wanna do that for the, for the road as well. And I think with a twenty-foot road, I, I do think you have much less impact for the trees, uh, as you come into that property. So, you know, but I, I am concerned about the, our firefighters and their safety and their ability to get in and out and do their job. Um, so, you know, at this point, we don't even know if the, the tree limbs are, are up to code and that the trucks can, can even get back there. I would think that if we, if we did this and was subdivided, we'd wanna make sure for public safety that, that that's, you know, that's for sure. So, I do have concerns about that. That's all. That's all.
I think the, one, getting down there versus then two, passing each other is a totally different ballgame. I'd kinda wonder, I mean, as the representative of the property owner, Mr. Pulli was saying before, it's a matter of height, cutting into the tree to get the height, and for a oak tree, if you start doing that, because they're so, they're a balanced tree, it's, you might as well take the whole thing down. So I could see one fire truck being able to get in there. I mean, I, I don't know if the property owner or Mr. Pulli could. Are we allowed to ask a question still to the representative?
Anything that helps the board make its decision, yes, ma'am.
Okay, have y'all, like, measured or assessed the current height of the trees to see if one fire truck could reasonably have access on the path?
To answer your question, I haven't measured, but it is my opinion that the fire truck could and can get back there without being affected by either trees or the way that the driveway exists. I think I shared the question with the people's concerns. I wouldn't want my family to be back there if I thought the fire truck couldn't get back there. I do believe that it could. I, I wasn't aware that the marshal was leaving, but he went back there. He told me to go and ask for a variance, right, so.
Can you speak up, please?
Thank you.
I didn't know the fire marshal was leaving, but he went to the property. And then he said, you need to go to the board and get a variance. So that's where I, that's why I'm here.
Counsel, would it, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? Counsel, would it be, could we put a condition on it that says that there must be vertical clearance for at least one fire truck to access it along with perhaps another condition about the number of structures that can be?
Yes, ma'am, as you were engaging with the applicant, I had the thought that an additional condition could be that the road would be maintained in an all-weather, passable condition, sufficient to allow emergency vehicles to access the residences located on this property. And, you know, and then the, the property owners have the burden of keeping the road maintained and perhaps trimming the vegetation and, and things like that. I don't know that I would normally recommend something like, like that generally, but, you know, the uniqueness of this property and what they're trying to achieve might allow the board to be creative with a condition along those lines.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it.
I would just add that the driveway is meticulously maintained. It is, they, they constantly put rock on it. I mean, it's, you know, when it rains, you know, the driveway, it doesn't get muddy or rutted out. I mean, it is a very well-maintained driveway, so I, I'll just add that, that point. And certainly, we would want it to stay that way. And I think if you added that language that the town, that the attorney has suggested, certainly, that is something we, we can and are currently, you know, complying with. So, thank you very much.
Chief, chief, after your question? The hydrant, where's the hydrant located? Or is, I know it's on the highway?
No, sir, there is no hydrants. This is outside the, this is in our ETJ. There's no utility service down Steep Point Road on that end.
And, and the reason why I ask you that is that I know people hearing two trucks and they're going like, well, why would one truck be coming in and one truck be going out? But if five truck and there's no hydrant, you have to bring in a tanker.
Yes, sir. On a strategy, from a strategy like that, you could put the tanker or you put the water shuttle at the end of the driveway and lay in. There's, you know, relay pumping, there's different strategies we'd have to take on with a situation like this down on the end. You know, that's all gonna be dictated on the scene at that time. You know, but yes, a water, it would take a water hall situation to get water down there. There is no hydrants on that end of Steep Point.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. I'm not trying to lead the board, but there's two actions, once we close this hearing, that they need to do. One's the finding of fact with the A, B, C, D aspects. And then if, if those A, B, C, Ds were to lean towards approval, then verbiage that you use could come in in the second action under the variance with conditions.
Correct. It's a, it's a two-part action.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
One more question, just going back to tree removal, is there, the plan is not to remove one tree from the lot? Or any trees from the lot? That if, if a variance was granted? Is that correct?
Yeah, we don't want to cut down the trees.
Would you have to cut down any trees?
What is there now is like a thick brush. I don't know how else to describe it, uh, like a wax mur or something like that. I'm not even sure if that's the correct term, you know, but there are a couple pine trees in those woods, and we don't wanna cut them down, right? We just wanna clear the brush and that's where we're gonna put the house. To answer your question, it's not our desire to cut down any trees.
Any further questions? Then it's time to close the hearing. Do we take a, can I let her just close the hearing there, counsel?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Keep me straight.
Let's take a vote on that, Mr. Mayor Protem.
On the closing?
Yeah, have a motion and a vote to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Yeah, you get a motion or the closing of the hearing?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same? Okay, hearing is therefore closed. All right. Looking at my record, right, we need to...
And Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may.
Yes, ma, yes, sir.
I mean, you can go about this several different ways. If there's a motion to find each of the facts, you know, unnecessary hardship, hardships result from the condition of the property and so on, you can do all of those findings in one motion, and for each factor, you have to cite a fact supporting the factor. You can also do them individually. But ultimately, variance can only be granted by a four-fifth vote. That's in one sixty D and in your ordinance, so just, just to be clear.
Would you shiver me timbers?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That good. This is totally contrary to my normal way of proceeding. But I make a motion to table this action tonight with the hope that the applicant could reexamine the survey and carefully remeasure to see if there's some possible way that they could construct a twenty-foot wide, thirteen and a half feet, clear height, tree height limit on their property before we make the decision on this case.
We have a, have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Oliver? Any questions?
I'll make a discussion. I, I also, I just have a hard time granting it because I don't have any information from the fire marshal to, to tell me that this, even in its concurrent condition, that this is a, an easy ingress egress for the, you know, for an emergency vehicle. And if there was some way that we can accommodate, but also get that in there to allow for that safe ingress egress of those very heavy vehicles, I'd be, I'd be interested in that with, with some of the conditions that we had talked about. But it's just difficult to, to put that on our fire department right now, without notice.
Fire marshal leaving, what recourse do we have in terms of, or will we have the chief to go out and take a look at that land so that the board, obviously, probably, as far as, especially with Commissioner Oliver, needs more information pertaining to the roadway itself?
Sure, well, we would definitely work with staff on that. The chief may be able to, or address those concerns. Even if the fire marshal has left, he can always come back and testify. So, you know, I think, I think with your planning department, your management, we can get the folks here to hear from to address those.
And no small part of my motion is I hope the applicant will really, really take a twenty-foot tape measure and go out and see if there's some possible way that without damaging the view, without damaging the property, without damaging the neighborhood, not damaging all the things that they have pointed to, if they could possibly figure a way to construct a twenty-foot wide, thirteen and a half foot high clearance without raping the neighborhood.
All right, we have a motion on.
Well, what I, I mean, obviously, it looks like we're not gonna have four fifths here right now.
That's another.
But what I would want to know is can a single fire truck get down there right now? What you're, what you want to know is something different than I want to know. You want to know if two fire trucks.
I'll ask both questions. I'll ask both.
Yeah, okay.
I'll add that, I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to include that.
Gotcha.
Whether there's a safe, whether there's a, whether in fact there's a safety of, safety issue as it currently exists in the fire marshal's professional opinion. Excuse me, in the fire chief's professional opinion.
Can I ask a question? If we were to table this tonight, do the same guidelines apply where the commissioners cannot continue to communicate about this outside of our meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanna.
Technically, what we're going, what we're going to do is reopen the quasi-judicial hearing at a later date. And perhaps bring in more witnesses or have additional testimony from witnesses that have testified tonight. So you're still under the ex parte contact rule since we will be.
So we cannot go out and do our own research after this hearing, as there will be a continuation of this?
What I, what I would propose with the applicant's consensus would be that myself, the planning director, and the fire chief meet on the site, do a physical inspection, maybe even we talk about someone doing a compaction on the roadway. There's an old-school way to do it, and then there's a geotech way to do it, to see what kinda load-bearing the current, current driveway has, but to, and to come back with some visuals for the board to see, you know, pictures of the vegetation. But we'd like to do that with your, your permission and your participation, both of you gentlemen. If, and we can arrange that at, at, at your convenience. And then we'd be ready to come back with more visual information and questions answered as far as limbs that might need to be trimmed or might not. And if that makes sense.
I know this is probably very frustrating for you, probably want, maybe want to move on, but in order the safety and compliance of the state, we need to make sure that we're gonna make ju, sound decision pertaining to what's best for you and what's best for Beaufort, town of Beaufort. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor? And that motion is, looking at what again there, Commissioner Oliver, twenty?
I'm sorry, sir?
Your motion.
Yes, sir.
Your motion. What was it, twenty?
What is your motion?
Well, I, I think my motion, as amended in suggestion of Commissioner Gilligan, is that the applicant find, see if there's, with great accuracy, if there's a way without hurting the environment, either view or trees, to construct a twenty-foot supporting road, one. Two, to see, have to have staff analyze and come up with a professional opinion as to whether fire apparatus can safely be dispatched to that site as it is. I think that covers it. Is that?
And for that road to be.
And again, I will share with the applicant, this is completely contrary to, I hate kicking the can down the road, but I'm hoping that we could get more facts, better facts, fuller information, something that people can, can swear to it, to provide this. And, and then we'll try to fairly judge the thing, and, and, and we apologize for the, for the kicking the can down the road to another meeting, but we appreciate you, your appealing to us, and, and obviously, we're more than casually interested in seeing what we can do.
The mouthful.
Yep. Short reading, what you said.
Yeah, it's past the hour. All right. Any, any further questions? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Ooh, did I get it all? Aye. Same. So we will table this. And staff, bring it, bring it back to us at a later date. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we need to close this hearing, right?
Yeah, you're done.
Oh, we did that?
Done.
Done. All right, old business, one thirty-eight Chadwick Road.
Assistant Town Manager Elizabeth Lewis will provide background on this item.
Thank you. As you recall, at the December ninth regular meeting, the board directed the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of a volunteer annexation application submitted by the property owners at one thirty-eight Chadwick Road. With that, I submit the following findings. The property is within the R eight zoning district. The Beaufort Comprehensive and Kama Land Use Plan identifies the future land use classification of this property as traditional neighborhood residential. The request for water service is currently pending approval of the request for annexation. The sewer allocation request has been approved at a staff level for a hundred and twenty gallons per day for an existing two-bedroom, single-family home currently on the property. The property owners are aware that they will need to pay for the water and sewer utilities developmental fees prior to connection. Another area, it's important to note that the town's fire department and police department will not be impacted by this request as they currently serve the ETJ. The request is contiguous to the city limits. I know this is something you, you have asked me to look at in future annexation requests, but Duke Energy is the service provider currently in that area. With that, I present the certificate of sufficiency as listed on the screen and submit that to you as it is in the agenda packet. Staff has no concerns with this request and suggests moving a public hearing to be set for February tenth at your regular meeting. And happy to answer any other questions.
Any quick, Commissioner La Piccola?
Uh, no, I visited the property. I've, I, I, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Gilligan?
No questions.
Commissioner Oliver?
Just one quick question. There's, there's an existing home on the lot, correct?
Yes.
And how many bedroom is it?
It's a two-bedroom, single-family.
Thank you, that's all the question I have.
Commissioner Sneakler?
No questions.
Okay. So need a motion to set, for setting a hearing date of February the tenth? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a hearing date for February tenth for the property on one thirty-eight Chadwick Road. For voluntary annexation.
Ready for question? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same. All right. Public hearing date set for February the 10th, 2025. Okay, move on to case number 2412, preliminary final plat for 360 State Point Row.
This item will be continued in conjunction with the variance case that you still have pending, so we will, we will move this item along in lockstep.
Okay.
With the next agenda that that, that quasi judicial.
Thank you. All right. Beaufort Waterfront Operation and Finance Committee update. Commissioners, Commissioner Spiegler and Commissioner Gilligan.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. This will just be a short update today. Our waterfront committee met for the first time this year last Thursday on January 9th. We had a very good meeting. We heard a number of updates. Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Oliver were in attendance, so thank you. We heard an update from one of our members, Dexter Matthews, about a meeting with the county commissioners prior to the holidays, and Dexter gave a very positive update about that meeting with the county commissioners. That was to discuss their support for the waterfront project and for requesting an appropriation from the state legislature. Commissioner Oliver was also in attendance, as was Mayor Harker, a number of the county commissioners and county staff, and from what I understand, it was a very positive meeting. Also, I think the sentiment was, you know, it's good for the county and the town to work together, so that was very positive, and from what I understand, the county commissioners will be voting on a resolution their next meeting to support our waterfront project. In addition to that, we have some exciting news that a one-pager from Sharon, from Mayor Harker, was sent to our delegation in preparation for the long session, which I believe started last week, and I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Oliver for your assistance in communicating with our delegation. They, it seems that they are also very positive about our appropriation request. That being said, we do recognize that there was a very, very horrible hurricane that hit the western part of the state and that there is a great need for assistance to the western part of the state in this upcoming legislature session. So we think that we do have a good chance for an appropriation to help us in our waterfront project, but we are also realistic that there is a lot of need in our state. But we do feel very positive about moving forward. So that's those items. Two other updates, and I might let Charlie hop into, to fill in anything that's happened in the past few days. So we currently have two RFPs out for the waterfront project. One is the Fuel Farm RFP, although I believe that may have closed today. Is that correct?
Closes this Friday.
Oh, this Friday. Charlie, do you want to give an update about that, or, sorry to put you on the spot?
No, that's fine. It closes, this is our second advertisement, and it closes on the 17th at noon this coming Friday. We still just have the original two responses. I've had contact from a third, but have yet to receive any, any information from them, so, but the good news is that as of Friday at noon, even if we just have the two, we are legally able to move forward with conversation and ultimate negotiation with those two offers. And then the RFP for the concession air, the deadline for that submittal has been extended till, at the request of the waterfront committee, till February the 28th, having verbal communication with two potential offers, and we anticipate a few more coming in as we, as we get into February.
Thank you, Charlie, and so because the first time we put out the Fuel Farm RFP, we only had two applicants. We did have to repost if we only get two applicants again, where we can move forward. So our timeline is just a little bit behind, and the Marina Management RFP is right on time to close at the end of February, but even with that being said, we feel confident that we're still going to meet our timeline for the transition of the Marina by the end of this year. And I say it many times in our public meetings, in our waterfront meetings, this work could not be done without our amazing committee. We have a committee member sitting in the audience right now. They have worked extremely hard, and they are extremely talented, so we are just very fortunate that that work continues, and we're excited to see what comes out of the next six months with the waterfront. So it's kind of a lot of information. I want to allow time for any questions from the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lupicola?
No questions.
And also, Commissioner Gilligan, please add anything I've missed. Oh, I did miss the brick applic, or submittal, if you want to give an update about that.
Yeah, our town engineer, Sam Bell, was able to submit that on, on behalf of the town, and WK Dixon kind of reworked what we already had, and I thought it was a greatly improved product. It would be only for planning and scoping activities. WK Dixon did speak with DPS representative and decided that we wouldn't go for the whole thing right now, but we do hope that we are invited for the full proposal, but that, that was submitted December 20th, maybe, or the 19th.
And since Sam Bell is here in attendance, he wasn't here at our last meeting, Sam, I just want to say thank you very much for all the work that you put into that. We very much appreciate it.
Commissioner Oliver?
No questions. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say, as I've been, I mean, sorry, did you have?
No, I was just going to say that our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd, in the Train Depot, and it's open for all that would like to attend.
Yeah, definitely, if you want to hear and, and see, see this committee, like you said, their next meeting, January.
A week from this Thursday, January 23rd.
They are doing a tremendous job, and I've have stated at each, each of the meeting that they have made a presentation that I'm very pleased with the progress that they have achieved in this, in this short period of time, and I have no doubt that they will by the end of the year have this thing done. They're doing a great job. Okay. All right. Public comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. I have one individual, Ms. Cheryl Tolls.
Okay. Ms. Tolls, you please state your, state your name and address, please? And speaking to, yeah, speaking to the mic?
My name is Cheryl Tolls. I live at 100 Broad Street. I am here again this month regarding the town public sidewalks that have been removed by private homeowners in front of their homes at 105 Front Street and 113 Front Street. These sidewalks were located on the north side of Front Street and the 66-foot public right-of-way of Front Street. Both properties are subject to the right-of-way of Front Street. It's in both of their deeds. This, these sidewalks provided direct ac, access to the west end of Front Street and to the town benches in the waterfront viewing area. So you could walk down the north side of Front Street without crossing the road, go directly to the west end and come back, again, without walking on the sidewalks, I mean, without crossing Front Street. So now everybody has to, has to cross over Front Street because the sidewalks are, have gone, have been disappeared, have, have been taken out, and the planning director and the interim town manager have stated that they can alter sidewalk access routes if they choose to do so. They've given me lots of different reasons why this was done over the last several months. This is the latest reason. We can just do it. We can alter the routes if we choose to do so. But why would they choose to do this if it creates a safety issue and, for the public, having to cross the street twice, because that, of course, is the end of Front Street? So when you go down to the west end benches and to that west end viewing area, you have to come back, so you have to cross Front Street two times, and it's also a liability issue, I believe, for the town. If somebody gets hurt because the town took out the direct access to those benches and viewing area, making them cross the street, if somebody gets hurt, I think the li, I think the town's going to be liable. I'll certainly share any information I have. So my question is, right now, is there a rational reason for the planning department for doing this? Why, why did they not require those homeowners, well, the 105 property owners, they were supposed to replace those sidewalks, and if you look at their certificate, their application for a certificate for appropriateness for their elevation and the renovations, they said, in fact, in detail, that they would be replacing, reinstalling those sidewalks as, as part of their renovation. They took them out because they sort of had to. They were going to get all messed up, but they were going to put them in, they were going to raise them up, they need to keep, they were going to keep them in line with the other property owners on there. They quoted things from the, from the B8, from the historic district guidelines, but they never did it. So, so why, what is the reason that the planning department is allowing this, is the question? And why, why is the reason so important to not make him put those sidewalks back in that public safety and town liability is outweighed by, by them making that decision? They force everybody who's disabled or otherwise to cross Front Street at the end of west, at the west end, two times to be able to access those benches. The planning department needs to answer the town commissioners and the public why this makes sense. My questions tonight, especially to the members of the BOC, is which scenario makes more, more sense and is safer for the public and prevents less liability for the town? Reinstalling the previously removed contiguous north sidewalks that led directly to and from the town benches and west waterfront viewing area, which don't require anybody crossing over Front Street, or to not installing the previously removed contiguous north sidewalk, therefore forcing everyone to cross over Front Street twice to access south sidewalks to get to and from this area. Everyone, again, disabled or otherwise, would have to cross twice over Front Street, which is probably the most traveled east-west street in the town area and the most traveled by locals and visitors alike.
Ms. Tolls, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has, has expired. I believe you have sent some communication, so.
I'm sorry.
Hopefully, it would be, you will get an answer, but your time, your time has exceeded.
Oh, okay. It's, I've exceeded it.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a little bit more, but, well, thank you very much for your time.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to managers' report.
Just a couple of quick items here.
I didn't, I didn't know that you had to sign up for, for a public comment.
Just state your name.
Yep. State your name and address, please.
My name's Hunter Lupton. I live at 358 State Point Drive. During the whole process of what the Newnams were trying to propose with their addition of their dwelling, they've been completely transparent, and I, I thought Beaufort was about preservation. If you go down State Point Road to where our residence is, we live on a very unique scenic, almost plantation, I guess it was a plantation at one time, type of area. If you do much alteration to that gravel road or to the white fence that's down it, you're degrading the property. You're taking the beautification out of Beaufort. The, the pecan trees are over 100 years old. There's, the oak trees are becoming mature, and if you do much trimming on those, they're probably going to die. My family's lived there 10 years. We had all kinds of construction trucks go down that gravel drive. Myself and Wayne Newman, Newman, the other property owner, has impeccably kept up that gravel drive. Just recently, I had 16 tons of gravel dumped out to maintain it, and there was no problem with dual tandem truck getting down there and getting out without harming the truck or the trees. They are not, the Newnams plan, and Alex and Emily, they are trying to do something for their families, and they're trying to do something to beautify our area. They're not trying to come in with a skyscraper of a, a build, something that is going to degrade the property. It's going to blend in. It's going to look just as good as any of the other homes that are in that area. That area is a very special, unique area, and I'm telling you, if you let much alteration happen to that road, which is a beautiful plantation-like road with those oak trees and that white fence, you're doing a, a disservice to the people, especially the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who did not sign up? All right, now we'll move on to managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The Professional Park Stormwater Study is, its final iteration is, is back, and we will be distributing that to the board later this week. I would like to put that on your work session for the 27th, for us to just touch base on that, not, not really dig into the report, but we'll talk to you about the public information sessions that we had previously looked to, to schedule and talk with you about that, and hopefully we can get that back on track in, in February, and if not in February, in early March. Pivot Parking will also be at your work session on the 27th, and the purpose of that, we, we still have a parking discussion on your retreat to talk about policy, particularly use of funds and those types of things, but what we want to do on the 27th is talk to you and have a discussion with you about any rate changes or any other changes, monetary changes to the program or date changes to the program, so that we can go ahead and put those, any changes that you might, might want to implement, that we can put those into motion and, and not have to wait until February to get those things moving, since if we're sticking with, what, March 1, as, as a startup date, to, to make some changes, the first week of February might, might not be possible, but if we, if we take care of this the end of this month, I, I think we can do whatever it is you want to do. I know that several of you have received information on the sidewalk situation at the west end of Front Street. Instead of doing individual sessions, what I'm going to propose is, once again, on your 127 work session, that staff actually work with our planner and myself and, and, and public works, and we'll try to give you a, a history lesson on, on what has occurred and, and what options, if any, the board may have, but the main thing is educate the board on, on that situation, because I know all, if not, most, if not all of you are receiving, you know, inquiries and such on this, so that might be a way to kind of, let's, let's talk about it together one time, and, and if we need to talk about it another time, we'll do that too, but at least make sure that, that everyone's up to speed on that situation. And then lastly, I'll ask the town attorney, he hasn't had much mic time tonight, but he's going to tell you about the closing on the Stevens property on Front Street. Thank you, Charlie. Yes, we're scheduled to close on Thursday. This is the property that's going to help us complete, I think it's called the Trestle Walk Pedestrian Path. It's basically the. This is the Front Street. Oh, I'm sorry, the Front Street. I'm going to blame, blame Elizabeth on that one. Yeah, the 611 Front Street property. We're going to close on that on Thursday. We've got everything set up and ready to roll. Documents are being executed and delivered, and we've got the settlement statement prepared, so hopefully, look for an email late on Thursday or on Friday that the deed's been recorded. If you have other questions, I'll be glad to get confused and give you an accurate answer on those also.
You'll be specific.
Very specific.
Thank you. That's all.
That's okay. All right. All right. Commissioners comment? Commissioner Lupicola?
No, no comment. It's been a long night. We want to get everybody home a little early tonight, so no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gilligan?
Well, this is a rare occasion when I will make a comment. First of all, when I acknowledge the passing of several of our really important esteemed community members, and just makes me realize how fortunate we are to have these people contributing to our communities, and they leave legacies. And I'll, I'll just stop there, but rather than be sad, I tend to really feel lucky that we had them in our presence, and we'll have marks that we can see for many years to come. Completely changing directions, I've been really into reading old Beaufort newspapers recently. And so, I have a very short article from January the 15th, 1920, so 104 years ago. And I like reading these things because it really helps put a lot of things in perspective. And so, the title of this short article is "Keep Out Cattle: Higher Rates Charged for Impounding Stray Animals." "Cattle and hogs will not be allowed to use the streets and yards of Beaufort as they please from now on, according to an amendment to the town ordinances adopted last Friday night by the Board of Commissioners. Ponies too are included in this prohibition law, as well as your ducks and geese. The charge for impounding an animal will be $1 and $1 a day for feeding him. Ducks and geese get off a little lighter as the cost of impounding will only be 25 cents, and 15 cents a day board will be charged. The town gate, which is near where the old elementary school used to be, the town gate and fence will be done away with, and so, the animals from the country, as well as those who live in town, will be subject to the same conditions." This just kind of helps, you know, put things in perspective, you know, what things used to be like and, you know, how far we've come and how much we've changed. Thanks for entertaining my, my sense of humor.
Commissioner Oliver?
A couple of quick things. The Maritime Education Center at Gallants Channel has been given its notice to proceed and is under construction. A well-known local site excavator is on site. I think we cannot possibly leave here tonight without sending our best thoughts to, to our mayor, who, of course, chose to drive with an older, unaccompanied gentleman and had a terrible automobile wreck, and she is suffering from it right now, but she's here with, with all of her emotion. And I think finally, we just have to recognize what's going on on the western part of the United States. Because abs, to me, we cannot even begin to comprehend the devastation, the loss, and it's going to take hundreds of years to think about that part of our country. And I ask that we join in prayer and think about the people on our western coast of the United States and California.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegler?
I just want to thank everybody who participated tonight in person and online. I think Commissioner Oliver stole my comments, but yes, I just wanted to say we're thinking of Mayor Harker and hope she recovers quickly, and just thank you, if she's listening online right now, for everything she does for our town. And we'll see, we want you to get rest and get back here when you are recovered. That's all I've got. That's it. Short and sweet.
Short and sweet. All right. Speaking of our mayor, I want to thank everyone who's in attendance today, as well as those on Facebook, online, that, as I muddled through this quadri-judicial hearing there, my first, may not be my last, but at least my first, and I got through it. I want to thank everybody for their assistance, such as council, town manager, and staff on that. The mayor likes me to thank all of those who sent well wishes. She is recovering. I saw her this afternoon as we went over what I was going to need to be doing this evening. She does have an appointment coming up, but she is doing well. Reason not, for not being here is that sitting to, for a long period of time in one spot is just not comfortable. There's just one of the reasons why she's not being able to be here. But she wanted me to make sure that I extend a hearty thank you to all the citizens of, of Beaufort who made inquiries pertaining to her, to her accident. She wanted to send out a thank you to Chief Ray, Chief Burnett, and myself, who, on the day of the incident, was there at the hospital to make sure that, that she was okay and that whatever that she need in terms of marching orders, we were there to, to take and man proceed as she so ordered. But luckily, she didn't have any. The western part of, of the state, yes, California is in, I mean, it's, it's very devastating, and, and enough cannot be said in terms of, of what's going on with them out there. But also our kudos, as such as our farmers here, the farmers who have stepped up and is, and is battling to make sure that they protect as much property and life as, as possible. It's hardship. I hate that there are finger pointing, which at this time, what they need to be doing is just concentrating on the fire, but that's just me. Of course, we're also, we're still having to deal with the western part of our state as well, that they're still struggling. There are still roads to be repaired. There are still businesses and residential structures that need to be taken care of as well. So, let's not also forget that out in the western part, they still need our, still need our help and our prayers. As Commissioner Gilligan was stating, we, we have lost, but I would like to give the flowers to those who are still here, who is contributing to the town. The ones that we have lost, there's a tremendous hope for the, for the town, but they left a legacy that hopefully we will continue to honor and make this town just as great as they have left. With that, I'd like for a motion for us to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, if I can add to that, it is pursuant to 143 318 11 A6 to discuss a confidential personnel or employment matter.
Okay. Thank you. So, can I get a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina statute 143-318.11 slash A-6?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, same time. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.